All right, we have seven o'clock. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please call roll.
Dr. Ramona Becker?
Here.
Guy McDonald?
Here.
Betty Martin?
Here.
Diane Nguyen?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. And with all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we'll begin with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody to your October 17th regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. Want to welcome everybody in chambers here and want to welcome everybody watching at home tonight or in the future. The first thing to come before council this evening is our consent agenda, which simply consists of the minutes from our last meeting, which was held on October 3rd.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
And first and second, questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same as aye. Next is our appropriations ordinance 2017-20 in the amount of $254,933.16. Do want to let you guys know, $12,168 of that was paid to KDOT for their annual lease payments on some radios. And $61,000 went to Wichita for water, for water we purchased. That's $61,000 of that, $254,000. $3,900 went for monthly streetlight bill. $18,811 of it went for the replacement motor on the public works tractor that I know we talked about after our presentation at our last meeting. So, just kind of explanation, some of the bigger items on the appropriations ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have one question. In the, I believe it's the land development section, there is a charge of $285 for domain name registration. My question is, I just bought a new domain name, registered it for, I think, three years, and I paid $998 for it. Is there's, I mean, is this a lifetime registration? Is there something special about yours?
Good question. And I know DocGov's are not, for government, you can't use like a GoDaddy because that way you get the ads and everything with the cheaper ones.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll ask Paul with our IT guy to see, you know, if there's some particulars with that and what that included and stuff. So, I'll find out.
Okay.
Good question. I will tell you with my very limited knowledge with that is, yeah, since we're a government entity, obviously, we can't have a domain that's going to sell domain addresses and...
No, I assume there was a reason.
And ads, yeah. But, yeah, we'll find, absolutely, we'll find that out for you. I think I'll find out from one source who handled that, so.
With that?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 17-20.
Second.
At first and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, item eight is a sad item, but a happy item at the same time because we rejoice with our colleague Peggy Sue O'Donnell, who has served on the city council for 12 years, three terms. So, anybody who was, say, a kindergartner or first grader your first year, they're a senior now. I'm just going to point that out. That was a good one that I brought to my attention earlier today. But, we do need a motion to formally accept the resignation of Peggy Sue O'Donnell. And just the reason for this is at the end of the last meeting, you heard her explanation that they sadly had to move just outside the district for, to found a home that fits their needs at this point and got a offer, had to close a lot sooner than they planned on it. So, unfortunately, I had to resign a little prematurely on that one. But, with that, I would accept a motion to accept the resignation of council member Peggy Sue O'Donnell.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of council member Peggy Sue O'Donnell.
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was kind of a sad aye up here, wasn't it? But, you know what? Before we move into that, I'm going to ask Peggy to come up here and join us. So, Peggy, I don't know if we're going to be able to look up there. But, you know, we're going to expect to see you there. You've kind of been a fixture and...
It's weird.
Yeah, my tenure with you goes back when we started together on the city council, serving together. And I remember the very long and the very hard discussions that the governing body had when we went through some very, very, very tough times up here. And you were here and guided us through that to where now, I feel like we're doing, we're doing pretty good, I think. But, for 12 years...
I'm going to turn to second.
Go right ahead, come here. We can take pictures, you bet. But, we did want to give you on behalf of the city, first, this is for your new house.
Oh, wow.
We thought this would be something, and since Michael just got here, he can help carry it for you. Come on up here, buddy. But, a nice little house plant. It's from all of us here on the, I didn't mean to put you right on the spot there, sir, but, for that. But, just hopefully you can have that in your new house and think of us.
It'll be perfect.
And I do have to admit something. I made a very bad error. I had a purple pot picked out and it was my wife who said, "No." So, you have a red pot to match your favorite colors there, I heard a thing. And then we also have, and this is two pieces, oh, I'm going to, okay. And this is two pieces, so we'll be careful. But, it says, "Presented to Peggy Sue O'Donnell in grateful recognition for 12 years of dedicated service to the City of Bel Air as a city council member." And this is Cargart glass and on a little stand with our logo. So, I want to thank you for that. We can step out from, you don't stand behind the podium here. We can do that, so. All right. Which one do we look at?
It's two pieces. Well, I kind of worry, okay, I see.
From the whole one, or?
So, no, I got it.
Okay. And you want to say any words?
Sure.
And what I would like to ask after Peggy is done speaking, would like to call for just a short recess of our meeting. We do have some cookies out front and a couple of things for you. Like to say hello and enjoy your day, but we'll let you do that first.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, and thank you, city staff, and everyone who's here. As I said two weeks ago, it was a very hard decision and one that we did not take lightly. But, I had already decided I had served 12 years and I really, really have enjoyed it and I appreciate the community for entrusting me and voting for me for three times and letting me represent them. And it has been such a great experience. As most of you know, I teach government and I always said, "This is not quite like the government chapter on city and local government." But, it is quite a privilege. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to work with you guys, work with all the other council members and mayors in the past. And I also want to express that I will still be here supporting. I'll come around. I might not get to council meetings, but I will be at activities, things like the Bel Air Days and anytime your Christmas open houses. And once again, Ty, thank you for leading us through some of those rough times. I feel like the city is in great shape and it's the work of not just me, but obviously all the other people that were serving on the council, mayor and city staff. And so, thank you. I appreciate this. This is very, very nice that you're having a reception. My other son could not be here and of course, my daughter's in Springfield. But, I appreciate the, this is beautiful. I know right where I'm going to put it in my house. And thank you for the reception and thank you for just being there and helping me on this journey. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you.
Something to bang a gavel to make this official. And I would like to ask the council too, as we're speaking of the empty seat, we spoke very briefly about it at the last council meeting. We do have, and Peggy was not seeking reelection, so her seat was going to be filled with the election. Actually, our next meeting, I think, is election night. And I would ask that the council consider, I mean, I'd like to go in and appoint the person, the non-incumbent who has the highest vote total, maybe to go ahead and fill in and start at that next time, so they can get started a little bit earlier. So, anybody has any thoughts on that?
I don't, I don't think I quite understand. So, no one is running for her seat? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, none of us are running against anyone. There's, Peggy did not file to run for reelection. So, we have, there will be a, someone new. We're guaranteed to have at least one new council member. My, what I would like to do is appoint that person who does not appear currently, who has the highest vote total to start immediately, be, starting then with the November 21st meeting as opposed to the January, was it, 3rd meeting?
Actually, take their seat at the second meeting.
Oh, is it the second one? Okay, yeah, so.
I would not be in favor of an appointee. I would prefer to have the person who has the highest votes to be, to take Peggy Sue O'Donnell's chair. That's what I think.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, the appointee would be the person who has the highest number of votes.
But, I don't think that, I'm not in favor of an appointee. I'm in favor of the person who has the highest number of votes, who is elected to take that seat in January rather than November. That's what I would prefer. That's my thought. Other members of council have expressed themselves.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Again, we don't have to decide tonight, obviously, but...
So, just so I'm clear, normally, that seat would be filled, would not be filled until January.
The second, yeah, so the 3rd Tuesday in January, correct. But, we will know who the highest non-incumbent vote getter is at our next meet, well, not at our next one, but that night.
I guess, it takes a little bit away from the esteem of the highest vote getter if the highest vote getters are the incumbents. And there's no, no way to tell that at this point in time either.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Has our attorney checked with that policy that we have about vacant seats?
And what, I mean, what's your question about the vacant seats?
Well, if, like Peggy's resigned and she's up in January. So, I thought we discussed last meeting that we would leave that seat vacant until after the voting and then all the seats would be filled again. But, there still leaves that question, if you fill that seat on the 21st, do they just sit in that seat until Peggy's term is up?
And then they would be sworn in for their full, or term, yes.
That isn't the way we worked it with Diane.
It's exactly how we worked it with Diane. Diane filled Ken's spot until the next election.
No, because Ken Lee was up with me and I'm not up until two more years. And she's running again this year.
Because this is the next election.
But, his selection time isn't up yet.
Correct. But, this is the next election.
It's up at the next regular election. So, even if they did have two more years, when a person is appointed, they just finish that year until the next regular election. So, it really shortens that timeframe.
Yeah. My thought process after our last meeting was, November 7th, the voters are going to choose at least, at least one new person. So, instead of having that one new person guaranteed starting January 21st, that they would go ahead and start November 21st.
Mayor, I think we do need to look at the policy, but I don't really think this would conflict with it from my memory of the policy. And since we have an election right now, I mean, we're in election season already, I don't think it would hurt anything to go ahead and set, seat the new person on the council, you know, before January. I think that would be, I don't see anything wrong with that because it is an election, they're duly elected, they're going to be coming on in January anyway. So, it's not like, the council doesn't have to go through a selection process. It's because they're being elected at this time. So, I would have no problem with that personally. I don't, as long as there's no conflict with our policy, which I don't think there is.
Right. I mean, you have a vacancy policy if you want to go through that route. But, with the end of the year and the election being so close, if you agree to have someone seat early, you can do that too.
Of course, we'd have to make sure that they were able to do that and didn't have any conflicts in their schedule. It just, I don't think it would bother me at all to do that.
Yeah, and I just want to make clear, I have no intention of appointing anyone who is not currently running, just be, and I don't even want to think about who it's going to be until after the votes are counted, so that then we know at that point.
Just give them a little running head start there.
All right. Well, I appreciate the feedback, but with that, I would like to call, I think, if we take, what, about a 10-minute recess from our regular meeting. And we do have some cookies out there and we can reconvene. It is 7:18, so I will go and call for a short recess and we'll call the meeting back to order at 7:28. We'll need to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Go ahead and do that. Dr. Becker's making way back up here. And I did promise now former council member Peggy O'Donnell that recognize her husband. Dr. O'Donnell and son, Michael, Commissioner O'Donnell are here with us. So, she wanted to make sure to thank and recognize them. And we thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. I meant to introduce someone, I forgot. So thank you, Mayor.
And we're grateful to loan her to the city for these last.
And you're more than welcome to stay, but I think we're going to get on with our business here. Take care. And also, I do want to clear up too, the conversation we had right beforehand. That's, we can vote on that at our next meeting. If that's how we want to fill the seat or not. And again, we probably won't know the winner at that point, but we can make that vote. Now, I didn't want to sign a decision we have to make right now. So with that, I'm going to move on to proclamations. The first one is Red Ribbon Drug Free Week. I'm going to read that. "To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas. Whereas the city of Bel Air values the health and safety of all our citizens, and whereas local leaders know that the support of people is the most effective tool they have in efforts to reduce the problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of the most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. Whereas it is the goal of the Kansas Red Ribbon Campaign and the City of Bel Air to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. Whereas the Kansas Red Ribbon Campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or illegal use of legal drugs. Whereas October is also National Medicine Abuse Awareness Month, and citizens are encouraged to quote, 'lock your meds', and properly dispose of old or unused over-the-counter or prescription medication. Therefore, I, David Austin, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Bel Air. And I call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to participate in drug prevention education activities. Wear and display red ribbons and make a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community." Honored to sign that. Reach now to pass that on. Next, move on to citizens' concerns. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council this evening? If not, we'll move to reports. And we'll start with Guy McDonnell.
Mr. Mayor, at the last council meeting, I was talking about an incident that had occurred on my property. And I indicated that the police were there within five minutes. There was there, an individual was there at eight o'clock, and the police were there at 8:05. And I think that might mislead some citizens, so I want to expand on that a bit. I don't think that citizens can expect to have our police there at their house within five minutes, depending upon the urgency of whatever event is occurring. Because the police are oftentimes at one the other side of the city, and they're involved in a situation that demands their full attention. And so therefore, I want to just express the idea that citizens should not expect the police there within five minutes, as they were in my instance. And so I just wanted to correct that idea. It depends upon circumstances and locations and et cetera. I just wanted to express that idea. And that, Mr. Mayor, ends my report.
Okay, I just have a couple of things I want to say this week. And first of all, I'm really looking forward to our Fall Festival. And I hope lots of people get out. It just seems like there's so many fun events planned, and it's a great family time. And we're having beautiful weather here, beautiful Bel Air weather, I call it, in the city. And so that's something we're all looking forward to. And then the other thing I'd just like to make note of, probably should have said this before Peggy left, but you know, she was on the council during some of our hardest years. And the other mayors and council members that served during that time. And I think it's really great that she gets to retire when we've had some of the best four years we've ever had here in the city of Bel Air, and things are just going so good now. So it's a, it's a good note to go out on after years of service. And so I just think that's kind of special, that she was able to retire with getting to enjoy these last four years. Because I'm sure this was a lot more enjoyable and fun than being on the council when you had so many really hard decisions to make, and money was so tight and short, and things just weren't going that well for a lot of the time that she did serve. You know, when, when it's hard like that, there aren't near as many people that want to be on the council. Because it's really a thankless job at times like that. So I think it's neat now that we've got everything going good here, and we've got lots of people interested in being on the council, because it's not near as daunting a task as it used to be. So that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Councilwoman?
Yes. In the past week, I'm not sure which day it was, I attended the REAP Legislative Committee meeting. And REAP is a regional organization that of ten counties, and all of them being in the south-central Kansas area. And we had been working to kind of re, not repurpose, but reevaluate, and, you know, sharpen the goals and things. And so it has to go through all of the regulations and getting voted on to be accepted, not only by the legislative, but the executive committee, which will be meeting Thursday of this week. But they did present a well-thought-out program. People were excited about it. And, you know, and part of this is to actually give us more strength when we are working with the legislators in Topeka. And we were talking about that out in the, in the hallway a little bit ago, how that's a thankless job as well. But being able to present them with things that are concise and very needed are, should be very helpful. It had just kind of gotten a little wide and wide open, I guess. One of the things that was also announced was that the Leadership Council has received, I don't remember the exact amount, and I didn't have time to look it up. But they will be, not giving away, you'll have to apply for them, but there will be grants available to all cities and entities that are members of the REAP organization. And they will be classes that are given by the Kansas Leadership Council. And it is at least $40,000 worth of training. So it isn't really all final how we will get some of that, but it is highly possible that, you know, we could take part in some of that. And REAP has been kind of one of my things here, because I'm a firm believer that not much happens when you're alone. It moves faster and better when it's a group. So that's, you know, kind of my REAP program for the last couple of weeks. I also attended the SCAC meeting, which was held in Sedgwick Saturday morning. And it just sort of happened that it was held at a place called The Meeting House. And that is a coffeehouse that was, it was built as a 501(c)(3). And approximately two years ago, I was approached by one of the owners, if you will, of this. Because what I do in business is helpful for their business. But at that point in time, they weren't organized, they didn't have any money at all, they didn't have a place, you know, a little bit ahead of me being able to help them. But I was really surprised. And Sedgwick has had some issues as a city, and some of their employees and things like that. And so The Meeting House took on kind of a, I guess, a mantle of bringing the city back together. And it is, it is a very nice little location. It's mostly coffeehouse. They served breakfast over there, and there were some pretty delicious things on that table. And they also had sandwiches and what have you that were very economically priced. So I would just say, I just thought it was nice, because we have talked numerous times about having something like that in Bel Air, and how we miss having a meeting place. So I thought I would just tell you about that. And it was just happen chance that I got to talk to Paul, who is the one who is basically running it, because I had known him previously. And he invites us all over at any point in time to come and have a cup of coffee with him and their manager and that kind of thing. But it was pretty amazing. The building was very ramshackle and what have you when they went in there at first. It is not now, it is very nice. And that kind of thing. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Senator Martine?
Well, quite a bit of this stuff's already been spoken about. I wish Peggy and her husband and family well. Saturday, I had the privilege of attending a trip with the Senior Club that meets at the REC Center. We met at Metropolitan Complex on 29th and Oliver at 7:00 a.m., and boy, that's early. We went to Salina and had breakfast at the Iron Stilet. From there, we arrived in Concordia and toured the orphan train complex. Left there and arrived at Home on the Range Cabin, and got to go through the cabin, which was very, very interesting. It's small, but it's like an old cabin. And then we left there and went to Smith Center for lunch. Then the most exciting thing is, that's on my bucket list, we stopped at the Geographic Center marker. So I've been to the middle of Kansas that stretches to California and the other way. And then we went to Crocker City, to the Mall of Twine. And we arrived back at the complex center about 7:30. And we had a wonderful, wonderful time. Of course, a lot of this was put on through WSU. But the Senior Club thanks you again for the money, because the expensiveness was $119, and each one of us paid $30. So they're putting their money from the city to good use. And they all had a wonderful time. I think there was about 12, I'm not sure. There was a lot of Bel Air people on that bus. But it was a wonderful day.
You did all that in one day?
All one day. Seven in the morning till about 7:45 at night. It was a good trip. So if anybody ever gets up that way, there's not too much to see at the Mall of Twine, but the... No, they told us to smell it, but I thought, I'm on the farm, and I smell twine, so I don't want to do that. But the Geographic Center marker was, was really interesting. It's just made out of stone, and then there's a little cabin beside it. But it's, it was very interesting. So I can say, I've been there. That's all I have for Mayor.
Glad you could do that. And I have no formal report. I do want to echo, yeah, what some of the things are set up here. I think Dr. Becker talked about. We have the Fall Festival this Saturday at the REC Center. My last look at the forecast, it looked like rain, but my dad's ordained, so I'm going to give him a call this evening, and we'll see what we can do about that. But there'll be plenty of stuff to do regardless. And we certainly hope that that weather holds off on that, for that. I, and I am sorry that I missed and forgot to mention the last meeting, but our council member Betty Martine had a birthday last week. So I'd like to wish her a happy belated birthday for that. And while I'm speaking about Betty, with the resignation of Peggy O'Donnell, we have an immediate opening on the CCUA. So would also ask, and I should have said this earlier, and I'm remembering that, at the next meeting, that we also would vote, and I've spoken with council member Martine about this, about having her replace Peggy. She is currently an alternate on the CCUA, but replacing her for the final two meetings until then all those appointments come up in January. So that'll also be on our next agenda for that. And I appreciate being willing to do that. We do have a CCUA meeting this Thursday, so I'll come back and talk about that. The, did get a couple of questions on Sunday from two totally different people at different times, Sunday morning, I don't know why, but asking about 45th and Rock. Some of you may have noticed, there's been a lot of dirt moving there, and some clearing of some trees, trees that are not in the preserves, so it's not in the wetlands. But the field dirt has been brought in, they're leveling that up to make sure there's not going to be any flood issues and to be in compliance. But what you guys might remember, golly, was that two, maybe even three years ago that we sold that corner?
A couple of years.
It's been at least a couple of years. And the individual, I still remember going to that closing, excuse me, had a lot of great ideas, but with development, and I guess now he has a couple of promised tenants. But we'll soon be able to know and talk about what that is. But nonetheless, it's exciting to see that something, it's in that commercial, something's going in there at 45th and Rock. So for anybody else who has those questions, and I, and I just want to give a shout out to Ann Stevens, who's here, because it was, I waited until after church, but I did. I texted her on Sunday morning after church, not during, and she responded almost right away to, because I wanted to confirm before I answered the constituents who'd asked about that. So that happened. With that, we'll move on to City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report for you this week. I'm just working away, just been working on, with PD on some special projects, working on contracts, and I'm available for any questions or anything you need.
Here and now, we'll move on to our City Manager then.
Thank you, Mayor. If anybody's interested in volunteering for the Fall Festival, I'm sure they could always use some more help. The committee, I think, has been working hard on that, and, but volunteers are always needed. So if anybody at home would like to volunteer, contact one of the committee members, Tristan here, or any of our city staff here, and we could get you in the right direction. But as everybody stated, that's on Saturday, this Saturday. The curbside cleanup is coming November 4th on a Saturday. So I know it's a few weeks away, and we'll have another meeting before then. But I just wanted to remind people that if they've got things, the larger items and things like that, they're cleaning out basements or garages, that if they can hold on till that Saturday, they can put large items out, and they'll come by, waste connections will come by, pick things, items up at the curb. And we'll get some information out. Of course, top tires, they won't take, things with Freon and such. But we'll be getting information out, so encourage citizens to watch social media to see what's happening. And then lastly, before our next council meeting, we'll have Halloween, which is... And then, lastly, before our next council meeting, we'll have Halloween, which is two weeks, I think, from today. So, sometimes we get questions about, you know, it's Halloween on a certain day and we just, you know, whatever 31st is, is when it is. But we always do have extra police officers out on patrol, watching for the kids, those types of things. So, just encourage everybody to be safe, but have a good time. And we'll be out watching as well. So, that's all I had, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for our city attorney or city manager? Let's move into our, we do have a long agenda this evening, but I think it's going to, basically, a lot of them are very similar things that we can move through, things that we have discussed at length for quite a while. Some of this is just legal ease that you have to go through for the standard process. The, but under ordinances, resolutions, and final actions, the first item to come before council, the city's completed the sewer main along 53rd Street. And that's what serves the Sunflower Commerce Park. You can see it on your screen there and we had it in our packet as well. The city is paying $132,000 for part of the lift station cost. And the reason for that is because it benefits more than just Phase 1 of the Commerce Park for that. The resolution that is before us this evening, and Sarah Steele is here from Gilmore and Bell, but this resolution authorizes that expense, which is included in the bond number. So, if you guys have any questions before we vote, we can certainly call her up. Let's see how council want to proceed on that.
It's thankful we have the money to do it. It needs to be done.
Yes.
So, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the construction of a sewage disposal improvements to serve the city of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the payment of the cost thereof by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, talking about the Woodlawn Engineering Resolution. We have our temp note that's being issued tonight. And within that is money to hire an engineering firm. This is simply the firm to begin the design of the Woodlawn expansion from 37th to 45th. So, that, this resolution allows for up to $580,000 to be spent on engineering. Yet, 80% of this cost is going to be paid for by the WAMPO grant, which we funded in 2020. And Sarah again is here, if you have any questions about that. But again, this is the temp note to hire the engineering firm and for what I think could be probably our biggest project today coming up, which we're all excited about. Anybody like to?
And we are talking about the Woodlawn.
Yes.
Project, which some people may not know of.
Yeah. Yeah, this is for the expansion from 37th to 45th. And again, this is just to hire the engineering firm, which is stuff we, all the things we talked about in the last couple of workshops, about all the steps that are necessary so that we meet our obligation with that grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing certain improvements to Woodlawn Avenue in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay such costs and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excited to see that get started.
Been waiting a long time.
Yes. I mean, I still, you know, we're talking with Peggy, I still remember when she and I were on the council together, talking about this 2020 project. So, it's been a long time coming. Consideration of accepting petitions for water, sewer, paving, and sidewalks is next. This is Phase 5 of the Rock Springs Edition. The developer submitted the petitions for that, of the Rock Spring Edition. He did that, I think, back in June. So, the project is now moving funding, is now moving funding so that the petitions need to be accepted since it's funded now. And then, all the costs associated, just to let everybody know that are associated with this infrastructure are going to be paid by those properties benefiting through special assessments. So, at no cost to the city on that. But, you know, it's another thing we talked about in June, it's excited to see happening.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept water, sewer, paving, and sidewalk petitions submitted and received on June 21st, 2017.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Now, here's the good news. D through G are all together here. These are for Phase 5 of Rock Spring. We, or the council accepted the petitions for Phase 5 of the Rock Spring Edition, yeah, obviously, just now. So, these resolutions are now authorizing the construction and financing are now required. This allows the projects to be paid via bonding. Again, this is all part of that legal ease, and we've got to go through the steps for that. And again, Sarah is here, if we have any questions on that. But again, this is for, you know, since we just authorized the construction here. And if there is a motion to approve the authorizing resolutions contained, we can do it for items D through G together without having to go through all the separate ones, since they're all related.
So moved.
Second.
Does that work?
That works.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let me get caught up here.
That was too easy.
Yeah. Well, here we go again, H through K. We can do the same thing. We just accepted paving, water, sewer, and sidewalk petitions for Phase 2 of the Rock Spring Second Edition. We did that at our, I think that was a June 20th meeting this summer. So, resolutions authorizing the construction and financing are now required, again, more of this legal ease stuff. So, and Sarah is here, again, I'll remind, remind us of that. But we can make a motion to approve the authorizing resolutions contained in items H through K. This would be for paving, sewer, sidewalks, and water in Phase 2 of the Rock Spring Second Edition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Boy, that's the way to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, long agenda looks scary, but we do that, so. Get up here, make sure I'm still...
Mayor, I'd just like to say something.
Please.
I think it's so neat to drive out there and see all those homes, giving people a good place to live and having sidewalks where people can walk and get exercise. You walk, drive around Bel Air, you always see people out walking, walking with their dogs, getting exercise, and just enjoying the city. And if people haven't been up there to drive around in that area, you should take a little trip because it's really a great service to families, I think, that want a nice place to live. And it's affordable, so.
Okay, let's move on to item L. This is resolution authorizing the offering for sale. This is a geo bond and temp note. This action allows for the city to pay off temporary notes on a number of projects that have been completed, as well as issue a temp note on some new projects that are currently being constructed, that are beginning construction. So, the bonds here will be offered on the open market, and we do that to help get the best interest rate for the city. We've seen some pretty good recent examples of why we've done that. The bonds will actually, are going to be sold in November, so next month, at which time council will be able to determine the best interest rate and buyer. This is kind of like what we did when we did some refinancing just a couple of months ago. So, and again, and Sarah is still here patiently nodding her head. We've not called her up yet, but... So, but again, yeah, this is to allow us to pay off the temp notes on those projects and then issue the new temp note, hopefully at a much lower interest rate. Is there a motion to approve the sale resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2017A, general obligation temporary notes, Series 2017B, and general obligation temporary renewal notes, Series 2017C of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And this is, I think this is something that we had tabled and brought, so we're bringing it back here. Item M, the Tree Board Bylaws. The city attorney was asked to review the bylaws of all of our committees, and the Tree Board approved the bylaws at their September 21st meeting, and they're now before council for final approval. And again, we had tabled this from the last meeting because the Tree Board had not yet met. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tree Board bylaws and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have to move to take it off the table first?
You know, last time I said that, but that isn't necessary because of the way you had it on the agenda at this meeting.
Okay.
How do you know the agenda?
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to talk about a replacement salt and sand spreader. I know I still have my air conditioner on today, but it's time to start talking about this because winter is just around the corner. The Public Works staff has been preparing their equipment for snow, getting ready for that. One of the old salt spreaders has corroded. It's corroded so bad to the point where it no longer is cost effective to repair. I know we've kind of milked that one along for quite a while now. But staff has solicited a bid in the amount of $11,600 for the replacement spreader. And I see, Ann, our Public Works Director is here, if we'd like to ask her any questions about that.
I guess we all trust you, Ann.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
According to the report that we received from Public Works and Ann Stevens, this old salt spreader that we had lasted for 17 years. So, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the quote of TPE for replacement of the salt spreader at the cost $11,600 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, questions or comments? If you make a comment, I hope we get it and never have to use it, but... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Well, for 17 years, it's lasted a long time.
Yeah, and it's, we've milked it through the last couple of years, so, with mild winters, but we're, I'll make sure. Okay. Item O, the homeowner of 5181 North Brookstone has requested five feet of a building setback, I'm sorry, a five-foot building setback line vacation on their property, so vacating from 30 to 25 feet. Staff is supporting this vacation as it matches the other homes in the area and does not cause any concerns. The planning commission did vote four to one, and so, majority in favor of vacating the setback. Again, it's just five feet of that 30-foot setback at their meeting on October 12th. And again, we do have Ann here, if anybody has any questions for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve an order vacating certain portions of building setback lines on property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments?
I do have a question. I don't remember seeing that in the minutes. Maybe it was there, or maybe it's minutes we haven't seen yet, but...
It's minutes you haven't seen yet.
Yeah, we...
They just had that meeting.
Yeah, they just met, was that Thursday?
Okay. So, I'd like to ask, what was the issue with one member that voted against this?
The member voting against this was, wanted additional information on what would happen, what the process and procedures would be if the planning commission chose to deny the setback. There is a home that is already constructed, that the setback was missed, and missed, was missed. It's set in the plans as 30 feet on the plat. This, they missed that 30 feet, used the common setback of Bel Air, 25 feet. So, the home is into that, is five foot into that 30-foot setback. So, the planning commission member just wanted additional information, what would happen, who would be held responsible, just kind of what the next steps were if the planning commission did not vote to approve that setback.
So, really, it's just trying to make it right.
Correct.
What was done.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
And Dustin is here with Baughman, the engineering company that did the lot plan, if you have any further questions.
Well, you know, mistakes are made sometimes, but it doesn't appear to be hurting anything
Correct.
From what I can see.
Especially the 30-foot easement.
Yeah, right.
And that is what several of the other planning commissioners noted, that this is out at Brookstone and Central Park. It doesn't look out of place.
No.
It doesn't, it's not noticeably different than the other homes along Central Park. So, the majority did vote to relinquish the setback. Thank you. You're welcome.
You used the word relinquish, and I got to use the word vacation.
Vacate.
Vacating, yes, but, all righty. It's been first and second, are there any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Item P, street patching of 53rd Street from Oliver to Woodlawn. And this is something we've talked about, again, our last couple of workshops, and specifically at our last one, but our city engineer feels that the asphalt on 53rd Street from Oliver to Woodlawn is holding up adequately. Again, this is from Oliver to Woodlawn, but that some patchwork would be beneficial to that. I know we've had talks about, Jen, much bigger projects at 53rd, but this is another one where some patchwork can be done. So, PP&amp;J has been the lowest bidder on a number of our projects, and we've worked well with them. And they're proposing repair several areas on 53rd Street. Again, this is something we can get done pretty quickly, which if we could, they could start tonight, I'd like them to, but, and again, Ann is back with answering questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
I think council member Martine and council member Becker attended a conference last year up in Topeka, I believe, and that they were, there was talk about a particular different kind of asphalt to use. And I, we have discussed this in the past. And have we purchased that and are we using any of it to do these patches?
We are using, we have switched our patching material to the newer form that we had seen at the conference. That is working out very, very well. However, it is still a patch. It is intended as a temporary fix. What PP&amp;J will be doing is they will be saw cutting the areas, making a nice square rectangular area, putting road, putting rock in, and then hot mix asphalt on top of that. So, it'll be a much more permanent solution.
I have, I live on Hillcrest, and at 45th and Hillcrest, there is, it's a dirt road, and there are three patches, I believe, there. And I thought it was the newer material because it looks like it's holding up extremely well, and I'm very pleased to see that. So, I thank you for...
You're welcome.
Doing that.
We do have a bid of 29.5.
So, this is, is, excuse me, is this the same item we talked about at our last meeting on 53rd?
No, that was 53rd from Rock to Woodlawn.
Okay.
That section of road is deteriorating.
Oh, I see. This is Woodlawn to Oliver. Okay, great.
But Woodlawn to Oliver is decent condition, other than a few spots.
Okay. And I have driven that road recently and...
And I have driven that road recently and almost thought I was on the other section that we're talking about in a couple of places. I went, wow.
Yes.
This needs to be fixed.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. It definitely needs work.
The majority of the patchwork will occur on the Oliver end, but there is a few places throughout the length of the street. The one picture that was included on the right side of your packet with a tape measure, there's pretty significant dips. And this was, we put a ladder across as a straight edge. That's a four-inch drop from where the surface is down to where the wheels, where you drive. There's very big concerns about that breaking up over the course of the winter. So that's one of the areas that we would like to get fixed.
And how long is this supposed to last, or how, for what period of time will this solve problems on that street?
This, the patches that we're doing should last for a very long period, 10, 15-plus years. The issue with the street is the same issue that we have with 53rd from Rock to Woodlawn. It was just never installed, never designed for the traffic that it's currently receiving. For some reason, the section from Oliver to Woodlawn is holding up much better. It's the same type of construction that was used on 53rd between Webb and Rock that we replaced this past year. I don't know why the three sections are different. They were all done relatively the same amount, same period of time, but for some reason, this first section is holding up much better than the others.
School buses don't go down that road. I beg your pardon? School buses don't go down that...
That's what I was going to ask. The school buses evidently aren't using...
They do, but I don't believe it's as heavy as the other roads.
Well, I'm glad we can do it for $29,500. That's great news.
Yes.
When will this work start and be completed?
It will be completed this year. It will, I would guess it will start within probably the next several weeks.
How long's it going to take you?
It shouldn't take much more than maybe two, three weeks. It's just small patches. I mean, there's, there's some that are fairly small, there's others that are pretty good-sized. It took our staff two to three days to do the patch at 53rd and Rock. We don't have the staffing, the number of people to be able to do that for the, as many as we have over on 53rd in time for winter.
So you're saying we need more staff?
We would love to have more staff. I'm not going to deny that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I used to drive a school bus, and I thought I just mentioned that the larger ones, empty, weigh 36,000 pounds, and that is a lot of weight. Then when you put students in, they're much, much heavier, so they do tear the road up. They really can. That concludes my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments, or?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from PP&amp;J for patchwork on 53rd Street between Woodlawn and Oliver at a cost of $29,500 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Anne, I appreciate you being here, and appreciate all the improvements we're making at 53rd.
You're welcome.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Final item here. Item Q, council discussed turning the one-mile section from Woodlawn to Rock on 53rd Street back to gravel due to the condition of the road. I think this is, talking about the other section, so another part of there on 53rd Street. And, yeah, I thought we were still getting bids, but here we are. So our public works director, and we talked about this at our last workshops, you've already received all the quotes and bids.
Yes.
It's awesome. But unfortunately, all of those came in higher than expected. So I know that Anne Stevens has been visiting with our city manager and our finance director, have some options, so I'd like to ask you to explain those.
I did bring pieces of 53rd Street with me.
The fact that you can easily pick those up and baggy them says a lot.
Whoa. Yes.
These are from the period, the portion that the public works department fixed earlier in September. You can see one of them is about a half an inch thick, the others, inch and a half, two inches thick. This is what we're dealing with, and like I've mentioned previously, I don't know why the road from Oliver to Woodlawn is holding up so much better. The asphalt's a little, or the cold mix, actually technically what it is, is a little bit thicker. I don't have samples from that piece yet. I'm going to get some. I don't know why it's holding up better, but this is what we're faced with. The county originally put it down many moons ago, and it's outlived its youthful life. We have received bids for turning it back into gravel. Andale Construction did call me and offered me a couple more options. One of the options was their slurry seal product that we have used on 53rd Street between Webb and Rock, 45th Street. We've used it on Edgemore. We're going to go ahead and use it on Hedgerow Street. Excellent product. It provides a very good, hard, solid base. They've offered that option with three inches of rock on top. They've offered the super slurry option with three inches of asphalt on top. And they've also given me a fourth option of the super slurry with rock and a three-inch layer of asphalt. And talking with Andale, they would not be comfortable if we just did the super slurry alone. It gets very slick when wet, so it would not be a good surface for people to drive on. So the super slurry plus the rock would be a good surface, or they could come back in 2018 and put down three inches of asphalt, and you'd have a pretty decent road. The other option is turning it back into gravel, which we had talked previously about. That's mainly what I was focused on. I totally miscalculated the quantity of rock and the amount that it would take. If you'll remember, I did present a bid from Dustroll. They are a milling company, and just to remove the existing surface was $15,000. I did not do my due diligence and look at just how much it would cost to turn that road after we take the current surfacing off into a traversable road. So that is my error, and I apologize for that. These are the bids that we have. My main concern for that road, you've all driven it, you've seen pictures of it, I'm getting calls, several calls a week, from citizens and people that drive that road that are very concerned about the safety. They're very concerned about their vehicles, some bottom out going through those ruts. When we have two vehicles crossing past, there's no place for the one to go to avoid the rut, so they have to go through it. And that's, people are very concerned, and they're very upset with the condition of the road. We've had concerns with the heavy traffic on the road. We do have a rock pot, or a dirt pile that's north of City Hall that we've been trying to get rid of, so we have allowed trucks to use that road so they can avoid coming through Central Park proper. I'd rather rip up that road, which is already disintegrating, than have issues with them coming through Central Park. So that's one of the concessions that we did make. And then, we all know that West Star put their substation up there. They had a lot of heavy traffic through there. They offered to pay to replace some of the asphalt patches that had deteriorated around their substation. However, when we decided to turn it back into gravel, they decided they would not give us an in-kind donation to assist with that. They said they'd put it back into asphalt, or they don't do anything. I would prefer not to waste the resources. I don't want citizens thinking that we are wasting resources by putting them, having them patch it, and then coming back and tearing it up. So we made that decision just to say, don't do anything because we're going to do something else with this road. That's pretty much what I have on that. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Ty has financing information for you to help you make a decision on what you want to do if you want to proceed turning it back into gravel, or if you want to proceed with another of the options that Andale has presented. I should state that Donlinger Construction was our low bidder with the gravel. They said they could be out here in about three weeks and have it in, back to gravel in two weeks. So mid-November, mid to end of November, they would have that done. Andale has expressed that they would be able to have the super slurry mixed down and a rock surface by the end of 2017 as well. And then the asphalt would have to wait until 2018 if we pursued that option, just because asphalt plants shut down, it gets too cold.
Which option do you recommend?
I really don't have a preference. My thought would be to either turn it back into gravel, or do the super slurry with the rock for the winter, and then come back with asphalt. It's completely up to the council how much you want to spend.
I think I like the last option that you gave. I think the road should be safe and should not be damaging to the cars of our citizens. So that would be my preference. Other council members can express themselves.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some questions, one for the attorney. What is the liability on this road to the city? If somebody has a real bad accident there, can they come back and sue us? Or is it because they were negligent in their driving and that type of thing?
Yeah, it would come down to the facts, and so long as the city is managing the road and keeping it at a reasonable, reasonably traversable, then we, we would not have nearly, it would be hard to prove that we would be liable.
It's just like any other public road you drive on.
Yes.
It's your liability.
Right, right. That, right, so it's something you want to think about, you know, as long as it's a safe road, whether it's the asphalt or gravel, there aren't any potholes that are neglected, and we're keeping up the maintenance, then...
Well, I think if it's gravel, they wouldn't be going 90 miles an hour down that road either.
You would think.
To tear up your car, but I don't know. Second question is, Mr. Rusher, do we have the $81,767, or where are we going to get that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll be happy to kind of talk about financing on all the different options. If it's all right, I'd like to back up and give a little history on 53rd Street, because we've been talking about it for months. And I was actually here when that, when that all took place. So just to give the citizens at home and the council kind of an update on how that all got started. So about, well, 10 years ago, 53rd was all gravel, all the way along there. And at that point, the only development up here was really Central Park. There was no other development going on. We were having discussions with the school district about maybe locating the, a neighborhood high school, neighborhood middle grade school up here. We had Jay Russell looking at what's Iron Gate now. It wasn't that, none of that was there at that point, but that was all platted. And so from a, kind of an economic development standpoint, we thought, okay, how are we going to attract builders and people up here to develop along gravel road? And so about eight years ago, we approached, Mayor Smith and I at that time approached Commissioner Unruh and said, would the county be willing to assist us in any way of paving that? And of course, we all know when we look at paving costs, how expensive concrete and asphalt is if you're going to do a great road. So the county said, we don't have the kind of funds that it's going to take because we know that to do that concrete portion we did, just, which was two-thirds of a mile between Woodlawn, or I'm sorry, Rock and Webb, that was $600,000. So you're talking about a million dollars probably per mile at least. They didn't have the funds available, $3 million, to do that, nor did we. As you all have mentioned, back then, there were some little struggles financially to even keeping payments being made on land and things. So what we did, what we were able to do is the county said, how about if we use our crew, road crews, and we put, put down gravel ourselves, I mean, put down asphalt ourselves, and you pay for the materials? So at that point, the materials for that three miles was about $35,000. And so that was the asphalt cost. So the council at that time said, okay, we'll pay $35,000. At least we'll get pavement all along that three miles. And that would help us if the school's really seriously thinking about coming out here, development, those types of things. So the county actually went in, used their own equipment, and did what they did of a base, which Anne will tell you is not, you know, what we would get if we had Andale or somebody else do it. Again, keeping in mind, the traffic was very limited at that time because there was no development up here. It was just people cutting across from, you know, Rock to Woodlawn once in a while because it was gravel. No schools. And so, so that's why, so, so the county said, we'll do that. The council at that time said, okay, we'll pay for the materials. So it went in, and it was a nice paved road when they were done. Of course, it wasn't constructed to standards that we typically receive, but it got us no gravel. And, and then it also, from that point, then we were able to, they started developing Iron Gate. We got the new grade school in, the new high school in. We've got all the development now with Rock Spring and those over there. So it, you know, in one respect, it did do its, its job in attracting growth. And the, but with the growth came the traffic, the construction equipment and all that. And because it was only built to county standards, which county standards were typically for trucks and tractors, you know, that kind of stuff, cars, not construction like what we had. So that's why, and they told us when they did this, said, you know, you're looking at probably five to seven-year life. You know, it'll last longer depending on the type of equipment you have on there. Well, so that's why it's all started to, we're eight years out now, and that's why it's, it's failing, is because the traffic that has now become commonplace is just tearing up the road because it was never meant to be that way. And we didn't put a lot of money into it, so I don't want citizens thinking, well, why, you know, did you put a million dollars in that asphalt? We put $35,000 in three miles. So that's why we are making these decisions now, is just a temporary thing at the, at that point to get additional growth. It's, did its job, and now we're faced with, you know, okay, do we go back to gravel, or do we start improving those roads because of all the growth and, and the construction equipment that's going on there? So, so I hope that helps you, and especially citizens at home, to understand that, you know, the, the roads that are there, they're in bad shape, we're, you all are considering what to do, but they were never meant to, to handle what they're doing now. It was, it was a short-term fix. It was $35,000 for three miles, and it, it proved economically beneficial to get all that development that we've got up here. So, so anyway, you know, with any road you put in, at some point, they, they need repair. And it just so happened that those were put in inexpensively, and, and because of the traffic, they need repaired quicker. As far as financing, so this year's budget of the $400,000, when you subtract the, the patchwork that you just approved, leaves about $50,000 left for this year. So the funds, if you approve to just simply turn it back to gravel, spend the $81,000, the $50,000 would come out of the street fund, and then we'd probably pull the remaining $30,000 out of our capital improvement fund. We've got about $260,000 in there. If you wanted to do something such as, was the fourth option, or what was 200 and...
It was...
The...
It was 310, 395 for the asphalt removal, the slurry seal, the three inches of rock, and the three inches of hot mix asphalt.
And that came to how much?
310, 395.
Okay. So if, so if you wanted to do that, which would be obviously a much better road, one that's going to last a lot longer than what was there, 310,000. So we wouldn't spend the $50,000 this year. Now, keep in mind that the money has been allocated for Hedgerow. So it's just not, you've approved the contract, the money's there, we haven't received a check yet because I haven't done the work yet. So that's, we're accounting for that. So we've got 50... So we've got $50,000. So if you wanted to do the $310,000, which would be, you know, obviously a very nice road, we would just not spend the $50,000 on any more road improvements this year, and then that would roll over into next year because we're talking about the street fund. At that point, if you wanted to weigh and say, okay, after the first of the year, we're going to do the $310,000, there's $400,000 budgeted for street improvements next year. So you'd roll the 50, so you've got $450,000. And you could say, well then, this will be our number one priority, so we'll subtract $310,000. And then whatever's left is what, what road work we would do next year. If you wanted to do it this year, as I said, the capital improvement has got about $250,000 in there. And add the 50 to that, so you'd have roughly $300,000 that you could spend. With the idea that then next year, when it rolls around, you're going to take a couple hundred thousand out of next year's budget, put it back into the capital improvement fund. Because the capital improvement fund is what pays for specific improvements, or in situations like this, you can kind of borrow from or, or use that. Some things that we had budgeted for next year, 2018, we had a, a new tornado siren that's about $75,000. That was budgeted out of CIP next year. We may need to make some rep, some updates to the HVAC system here, heating, air conditioning to make it more efficient. We budgeted about $70,000. And so there, those are a couple of things that we had, that were, we would possibly look at for next year. Obviously, if you spent the money out of there and didn't pay it back, then we couldn't do anything or wouldn't have any money available to do those types of capital improvement programs. So, that's kind of, and if you've got questions, if I didn't understand it or if I didn't explain it very well, please ask me. That's kind of the options that you would have in paying for this type of improvement.
I'm thinking about the siren, the air, you know, the tornado siren. I always hear the sirens when they go off. And so, that's $75,000, you said. I think I could be, you know, I could do without that. And the other option that you mentioned, I don't recall, but it was another equal amount or such, close to it. So I would be in favor, and I, I call myself a spending watchdog, okay? But it's also necessary to have the safest, you know, roads and, roads that are attractive and will enhance future development. And so I would be in favor of the, of the latter option that, that Ann mentioned, even though it's going to cost a lot more money. But I think it would be very beneficial to the city of Bel Air. We are an expanding community. We are a very attractive community. We're one of the safest communities in the state of Kansas. So I think all those things together allow me to conclude that spending this money at this time is the proper procedure. And I'll finish, Mr. Mayor.
And I'd just like to say thank you so much for that explanation. I know when we talked about this at our last workshop back, is that the August workshop or September? Our September workshop, we talked about it a great deal. Remember, we're talking then, oh, you know, I think we're throwing around numbers like 25, $3,000 versus $600,000. So it was a pretty, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that. So, and, and I certainly appreciate your honesty and appreciate all of the calculations that go into, into this. So I appreciate all that information on that. And I don't think there's one of us up here that didn't say this should be our number one priority, even when we talked about turning it into gravel, that we wanted it to be pavement, asphalt, pretty quickly. So now that we're talking, you know, you know, we're talking $81,000 versus $310,000, we're still talking a whole lot of money, a whole lot of money. But we're not talking $25,000 versus $600,000. We're talking a lot closer now, and that percentage has shrunk quite a bit. So, you know, with my calculation, you know, I like the idea of the capital improvements being there. So with the, let me just ask you this, because we have our priority list. We have the $400,000 as budgeted for next year. We've already approved that budget. We were to take the 50 for this year and 260, does that leave then 140 that we can still do road improvements next year?
Yes.
Then I, I think I would be in favor of doing that, certainly repaying the capital improvement. We're talking two months. But my number one goal is to see that street, I think Councilman McDonald talked about too, be a safe street. And if we can make that a safe street and a street that is attractive, for lack of better words, at the same time, I'd be all in favor for that. You know, because I think we, all of us, I don't want to speak for it, but kind of the consensus was, okay, turn it into gravel. No, that's not the sexiest thing we want, but by golly, we've got to take care of safety. Now, if we can go ahead and take care of the safety and make it a nice road, now if you can find a way to get another $70,000 or $35,000, we'll prove that again. But that doesn't seem to be an option. So I, I do appreciate the explanation there. But again, so I just wanted to clarify that if we were to do, you know, 50 remaining, that we would still be able to do this, make it our number one priority, and still have roughly, give or take, 140 for road improvements and more patches and more, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have another question for Ann. Is it posted over there what the road, truck limit is on that road?
Yes, it is.
How many signs? Couple?
I know there's at least one. I don't know, I, I'm not...
And it's posted for nine...
I believe $9,000.
$9,000 pounds? And a bus weighs how much?
$36,000 pounds for a large bus.
Are we given those buses tickets?
No, we do not have the equipment to be able to weigh buses.
The state will come out and do that for nothing, correct?
I do not know. I'm not in law enforcement.
Yeah, I visited with the chief about that, and KDOT does have that, or the, KHP does have that ability. And they have actually, I think it was in the last month, one of our officers was looking at a truck that, for however reason, he thought it looked heavy. And so he contacted KHP to see if they'd come over and weigh it, and they did. And it was overweight, and so the KHP did issue them a ticket. And so, the chief said that he has very good relations with KHP and that they would be willing to assist us, you know, when we had those situations that we thought there was a truck overweight to come and weigh it for us.
And who receives that money from the ticket?
Uh, the...
KHP or...
Yeah, the state does, yeah. But in that instance, I'm not sure what else transpired, but another ticket was issued that we received. And I don't remember, I don't think it was had to do with the weight, but there was some other issue that we received, some payment on a ticket for that as well, so.
So basically, we're looking at letting school buses use that or having school buses go through Central Park?
Yeah.
And the windy roads?
Well, they come off of Woodlong and Rock to go to get to the high school.
And it depends on the type of road. Because the, the nine ton was, was based on the, you know, the fact that it was a county, basically a county standard road. It wasn't built for any of that. Now, if, I'm assuming that if we did the, what Mr. McDonald and Ann was talking about, then the weight limit goes up, is that correct?
Correct. The weight limit would basically go away.
They, they'll hold heavier, heavier equipment so it doesn't tear.
So if we did the slurries to deal, seal with the rock that you were discussing, that is $310,000? That would take, that, that could accommodate the school buses, okay?
Yes.
And how many years would you expect that would last?
Chat with Andale is here. I would expect it would last quite a bit. He could answer, probably answer that with a little bit more certainty. And that, that 310 does include asphalt.
Right. So ultimately, it will be an asphalt road, but initially, we're going to immediately take care of the safety issues, right? And then have the asphalt road.
And, and it would last a long period of time. You're liable to see the same escalation of traffic as what you've seen in the last seven or eight years. So actually giving a, that number of years is kind of difficult to do, but I would say you would get a decent number of years out of there. Plus, a lot of the money in the $310,000 is put into the base. So there's always the option of adding asphalt on top to make a thicker asphalt section, which makes a better road.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, this is a far different scenario than what we had at the workshop, and I'm really glad to hear this. And I think it would be foolish of us to spend $85,000 or $81, whatever you said, for gravel, because that's not really a good solution. And for three times as much money, we can get a good solution that would last many years and be safe. And you know, our community is growing. We're going to have more homes over there opening out onto 53rd Street, another neighborhood over there. And I just think we really need to do this for our city. And I'm so thankful that we came in with a much more reasonable bid to do the right thing, in my opinion. So we got a lot of good out of that $35,000 we spent years ago, but now it's time for us to invest some more money in our infrastructure, so.
And we always talk about economic development, and, and with this section, see, this section is at Rock, which, this is where we're looking at our downtown, our park, our that. And so, you're going to have Rock, which is just a two-lane, and then the, the road that it, that our, that corner tees on is either going to be gravel, or it's going to be pavement, or whatever it is that you decide to do. And of course, Central Park will have a road that exits onto 53rd. I mean, you can, as you drive around, you see it's a dead end now, but it will eventually. So, you know, we always put on our marketing hat sometimes, and, you know, that's another consideration, is if we really want that corner to grow, how do we want it to look?
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor, as many members of council know, I had a trucking business. I had a couple of big trucks run the contiguous 48 states plus Canada. And it was interesting to hear what was just said about an officer looking at a, a truck and then deciding that he thought it might be too heavy, and so he called the state. Well, the state has something called portable scales. And if we could develop a relationship, if the city of Bel Air could develop a relationship with the state of Kansas, the state of Kansas would love to come out and put trucks on, on the portable scales because they get the money. And so, it's, it's a pretty good deal. And it would also, if our police department made a relationship with the state of Kansas to do such things, it would be beneficial both to the city of Bel Air as well as the state of Kansas. And I just thought I'd mention the fact that I have experience in that area. And as I said earlier, these, you know, heavy vehicles tear up streets, and that's all there is to it. So I'll stop right there, Mr. Mayor.
I have another question. Now that we're doing this, will Westar come in and partner with us on this as they had hoped to do or had promised?
Originally, Ann, I know, had talked to him, and that was our question is, and, and they said, the, the rep that we, that she was talking to said, no. I don't know that we would give up yet. We might try to go to some other...
Yeah, I would encourage you to go ahead and talk to them some more.
If that's the decision, you know, that you want to go, then...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially not we're willing to spend, well, I should say we haven't voted, resume and motion yet, but a lot more than $25,000.
Mr. Mayor?
With Westar, so hopefully we can continue those.
Have we talked with the school, or 259, to see if they would do anything to help us on this road?
I had one conversation, it came through an email that, that the school had heard that the city was considering turning it back to gravel. And they were just interested in to when that might happen and if that was the case. And so I explained to them that that was something that council was looking at, and that it would probably happen this winter if it did happen. So, didn't, I didn't ask them if they'd be willing to pay for any of that. You know, certainly we could. It would have to be some kind of type of donation, because when you do special assessments, which, you know, we actually, the, the road that's by Isley, the nice, the good portion that's got the turn lane, that was special assessed to those because their property butts up against the road that was being improved. Since the area that we're talking about improving, and none of their property actually hits that road, we couldn't special assess it to them, so it'd have to be kind of if they would be willing to.
And if I understand this correctly, you're going to take the $400,000 that we set aside for next year's budget for streets, infrastructure in the old area, and use it for this $310?
Yeah, we would, the, the roughly $50,000 left this year, and then the remaining $270 or whatever would come out of next year's to equal that $310.
So we'd still have some money left over for some street improvements.
For half of Rock.
Well, it's, it's disappointing if we'd have to take some more money out of what we have next year, but I say it's a good thing we have it. And it's a good thing we budgeted that much money for street improvements, but this is another street in our city where we're growing and where we have kids riding in buses on that street. I don't think that's going to change. So, it sounds like there's quite a few people using that street now from the amount of people talking about it. I've seen some stuff on social media of citizens discussing it, and they feel pretty strongly that needs to be taken care of. And with these new numbers, it looks to me like we have a means to do that.
Ann?
Yes.
Have we done a traffic count?
Not on that road, no.
Because I know we have traffic counters now.
Yes, we do.
I keep talking about traffic counters. It seems to me that we should know that. And then, will we need to reassess some of the, what were the A1 projects that you had on the list for next year? Because I know when you did your senior issue, streets came up.
Yes, they did.
Because a lot of the seniors are living in the older, they've lived here a long time, and they're living on older roads. And that's why it came up. So, have you done that yet? I mean, have you looked at that? I, I know you were interested in getting a lot of maintenance done quickly.
Correct. I do not have a specific priority list for that $400,000. We do have a priority list of streets and neighborhoods that need to be completely redone, that need to be overlaid, and that need to have patchwork and other rehabilitation done. Those, those groupings are prioritized within the groupings, but there is not a, this needs to be done first, this needs to be done second. There's not an overall priority list. It's just prioritized within the groupings. That $400,000 would have to come back before council next year to have council assist me in specifically which streets would be the priority, or which type of activity would be the priority. With the 140, if we pursue the 310 with paving 53rd, that would knock out doing any full reconstruction. It would probably knock out doing any preservation as far as any seal coats. It would majority be primarily patchwork. There's a lot of patchwork that needs to be done. The thermal crack repair that our crews have done on Farmstead, people love that. They're very appreciative of it. But we're getting so many more calls now that people are seeing that we're actually doing something. What about my street? What about my street? So our list is growing, even though we're doing some repairs to shrink it down. And that's just the nature... that's just the nature of it. We can do some things with that hundred and forty and we can get a lot of that patchwork done. We can hire a lot of it out and do some other stuff like crack sealing ourselves, uh, but it would certainly limit the amount of work that we were able to get done next year.
So how long will it take if we go with this, uh, three hundred and ten deal? How long will it take them to get that road done?
They would be planning on probably December of this year for the slurry seal and the rock and it would take them about...
No, I meant for the three hundred and ten thousand.
Yes. It would take them about three, about three weeks.
Yeah, probably three weeks this December.
You can't close that road, right?
We would close part of it, we would close the road to through traffic. We do have the one house on the north side that we will maintain access to. Andale's aware of that and perfectly capable of maintaining access for them. The asphalt would occur in twenty eighteen because of the weather.
Any other questions for? Now, I would certainly entertain a motion.
I'd make a, the motion for the three hundred and ten thousand, Mr. Mayor. For the improvement on that street.
Should be for the slurry asphalt.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
All second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments? Again, this is for the three hundred and ten thousand slurry to asphalt. So we'll have a lot of those issues taken care of by December, end of December. I know the school's out for a couple of weeks there too, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next, um, final item here is I'd like a ten-minute executive session. This is for confidential financial data and some trade secrets to invite, and also like to invite in the city manager and the city attorney.
So, Ms.? Need a second?
Yes, please.
All good.
Yes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Squeak in there. Okay, it is eight fifty-three for ten minutes, so at nine oh three.
Mr. Mayor, could you clarify that motion? I think there's another confidential, under the, um, KSA, uh, the exception for KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen, um, exception for...
Confidential financial data and trade secrets, inviting in the city manager and city attorney.
Including that language, thank you.
Yeah, okay. We'll be back in ten minutes.